This committee of the whole will now come to order. So yesterday, when we recessed, we recessed in order to give everyone some time to be able to read over Bill 139 that's in front of us right now. And we are back here now. So the way I would like to begin then the discussions today is we will open it up for general discussions by the members to basically express what general concerns they may have about Bill 139. And everybody will have an opportunity to express those concerns. Then after those general comments have been done, we will then be able to go section by section to see if there are any specific amendments that the members may want to make. Before we open it up for general discussions, the members of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission are down here this morning at the request of the committee to join us for the discussions based on the fact that really they are the body that ultimately when leases are executed, they will be the body that will be approving or disapproving those leases. So at this time, I'm going to ask the Sergeant of Arms to go ahead and ask the commission members that are here to come in. We'll take a brief recess. So present with us today is the Chairman of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission, Mr. David Matanani, a commission member, Ms. Amanda Santos, a commission member, Mr. Pasquale Sablon, Director of Land Management, Mr. Mike Borja, and Counsel for the Department, Ms. Finney. And so we'll start off first then with the general comments from each of the members. So Madam Speaker, did you? Then anybody else have general comments they would like to make? Raise your hand and I'll take, I'll basically take the role.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, some of the things, of course, in which, in review, of course, of, you know, the 12th Guam Legislature passing public law 12-226, and then, of course, in the 23rd Guam Legislature, public law 23-38, and then naturally now the newest version, the substituted version as submitted by the committee has really brought to light several questions that I would like to just, I mean, not necessarily have an answer for right here and then, but just some of the things that we're thinking about. And I know that on public law 12-226 speaks, of course, of the highest and the best use of the properties that are going to be leased, and how, of course, that had varied at the very beginning, not necessarily going with the fair market value of properties on the island as originally stipulated by percentage in which, you know, we wanted to charge. My concern is specifically, I know, with the commercial lease, and when you think about the intent of what the Chamorro Land Trust is for, as primarily, of course, is to provide residential agricultural lands for our people, that's the primary purpose. But we know that there's been this stumbling block, of course, of how then, when you issue these lands, that the, for these individuals to build on, if there are no infrastructure, how can you survey these lands so that you'll be able to give them out to our people? And we have, I think, on the list, maybe 8,000-plus individuals still waiting to receive properties. And when we talk about commercial leases, I have no idea at all in terms of the entire inventory of lands that really would be available, not just for the existing families, individuals who are on the list, not counting those that are becoming of age who then may want to submit their application, and that if we don't address those, and that's the primary concern, because now we want to generate monies, we want to lease out these properties. So there, so this brings me then to this question of, first of all, this master plan of all Chamorro Land Trust lands, lots, and how many partials of those properties that's in the inventory that's actually available or could be made available for commercial leases? Like, for example, let's say we know the Oka Point is definitely one that has been talked about a lot. We understand that there are small partials possibly right here within in Agania and some other pockets, but the way that the bill is presented, it appears to be open-ended, and there's no protection there whatsoever to make sure that we follow the intent of this law. It's just to address, of course, residential and agricultural properties to be made available for our people. And, of course, the numbers are not getting smaller, they're getting bigger. And I surely do not want to see the reverse where more lands than now, because we want to make some money, will go out for commercial, and then there won't be any available then for the people. So that's my concern. The second thing that I'm also concerned about is that there's actually no other protection as well, that although you have the business packet in terms of what a business company or organization must do to qualify, you know, showing their financials, showing their plans, showing what profits they're going to make in five years and all that, but anything can happen, you know? The economy could turn within that timeframe, and then they decide to just stop and withdraw, and it's not going to be returned to the, it's going to be returned, but it's not going to be returned in the best, for the best use, so that you'll be able then again to distribute those. There's no protection again for any destruction or contamination, and then the government's going to end up again, you know, holding the bag, having them to now address that, and it just defeats the whole purpose of what it is that we want to do. Those are just, you know, basic stuffs that I'm really worried about. Some others and others will talk about this more in depth as well, is that the, I know the commission members are tasked to, your responsibilities are far more greater than many of our other boards and commissions, and, but you're not economists, you know, you're not financial advisors, you're not realtors, and, and then the suggestion, at least in some discussions that we've had, is that, you know, whether the consideration as well of possibly bringing other agencies within our own department that really could assist and bring in the highest yield, of course, of, and, you know, for those properties to be able then to use, to survey, and to put the infrastructure in for the people. So those are, you know, some just basic concerns. I have not written everything down, but I thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to share some of my concerns.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Chairman Ada has relinquished the seat of the chair primarily so that it would allow for a dialogue and explanation of some of the provisions once we start entertaining section by section. So in regards to that, Madam Speaker, did you want any general response to some of the concerns that you raised? I know you had a general question with regards to the amount or the inventory of properties that the Chamorro Land Trust right now has ownership of, because if you would like to, as part of the general comment section, I will allow for maybe a question or two, so that at least we are all educated with regards to some of these issues that you bring up, and other members do. So if you would like any response, then we can ask them to be able to respond during the general question section, but obviously that won't prohibit us from asking the same questions once we go section by section.
Absolutely. Maybe others might be able to expand on it, but my, my concern always is, and whenever any land issues come before the legislature, one of my concerns always would be is to see the map of that particular village that we're addressing, a rezoning, let's say, so that, you know, I have a better picture that if we're going to do a commercial zone, you want to make sure then that the areas around it then are also of the same type. I understand, though, that in the law it does say that you would, you would want to create communities, individual communities, that would allow for leasing for, like a mom-and-pop store, a church, a school, when you build a subdivision, but, you know, you don't want something that's going to be strictly industrial, and then right next to it are all residuals. And that's why I was asking is that are, in your inventory, can you identify any one of those properties that are potentially suitable for commercial leases, something that we can look at, and maybe look at the percentage of that? And I'm hoping, I really am hoping, that those numbers are not greater than those that we really should be instead leasing out for residences.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Mr. Bor. Or if anyone from the Chamorro Land Trust Board would like to respond?
Thank you for your comments, Madam Speaker, and I'd like to thank all the members of the legislature for taking all this precious time the past couple of days to discuss this, these rules and regulations. You know, the, the commercial inventory of properties, while we don't have a specific listing of all of them, as I had mentioned before, the intent is not to go out and, and turn everything into a commercial, commercial use for the purpose of just making money. If you want to just get a couple of ideas, you mentioned one of them, that being Oka Point. Another area would be the areas near the airport along the cliff line. That's a lot of, that's Chamorro Land Trust property in there, which could one day become probably M-zoned light industrial. But the problem we have in, in most of that area still today is that that's not even registered property. And although it belongs to the government of Guam and is under the purview of the Chamorro Land Trust, you know, we can't even lease that until it is, the registration process is complete, and that's a lengthy process in itself. The areas that we would look at would be things that would be along the areas of major roadways. We have one specific subdivision that had already been put forward several years ago. We just never have been able to get off to the groundwork with it, because in the development of it, we have to have rules in place to engage in any commercial activity, even with a developer, even though we're not going to spend money, and they're building residential homes. But there is an area that, that fronts up along Marine Drive for those kinds of things that you were talking about, small little store, commercial area, so you can have the mom-and-pop stores, you can have some convenience facilities that are located there that would support the immediate, the immediate neighborhood. We're not looking at great numbers of areas that we can do much of these kinds of things. Today, that might be, there might not be something, tomorrow something else might change. But, you know, we even have areas in the industrial, around the industrial areas of Santa Rita where the old Gorko area is at. Some of those could potentially still be used. We don't want to put houses and, and farms in that area, and, but there are some lands in that area that could potentially be used for commercial use. We've had some interests and people expressing interest for, for doing things out there. A lot of times, some of the properties that we may want to use for commercial aren't even going to be the kind of activities that are going to require, you know, an industrial type of setup or even a major structure. The alternative energy needs of Guam are growing fast, but the lands available are very, very limited. So they've been coming to us, asking us for, for lots, you know, for land areas, but again, big wide open areas that are available, that belong to the government, are still unregistered. And that's the kind of stuff, you know, you have to have quite a large area for, for solar and even for wind, if that's the ideas that we're looking at going. So those are some of the potentials, but Madam Speaker, we're not looking at trying to do something where we're going to allow the commercial to be overtaken, and I invite the legislature to, to put in the limitations that might be required for us to, on how we would do commercial if that's necessary. But the fundamental needs for our commercial rules and regs is so we can get some revenue, so we can, we can focus on the primary job of the Chamorro Land Trust, and that's to give homelands, properties to our, to our residents.
Thank you, Mr. Bor. Yes, Mr. Matanani?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Madam Speaker, you mentioned intent, the intentions is all for Chamorro Land Trust, the protection, and you mentioned also protections. Within the lease, when we do issue our leases, those protection items should be in that lease. So, you know, and with the rules and regulation being modified or amended to make it stronger, I think that's all the protection that probably we would need, or trying to tighten up the loose fitting of the past rules and regulations, what's not enacted or not adhered to. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Matanani. Madam Speaker, thank you for your question. Do you have any follow-up?
Yes, based somewhat, the chairman, right? Because you're saying that you want to make sure that it's tight, you want to protect it, but the one question that I had asked is that should a company who had started already a project and for some financial reason stopped, and, and, of course, one of the rules says is that it should be returned in, you know, in a, in a situation, in a condition in which, of course, you'll be able to lease them out. But if it's not, and it's damaged, and it's contaminated, and it's not suitable for residential or agricultural, what protection then is, will you have, that I, at least I don't see here, to be able to protect then Chamorro Land Trust?
Of course, the, the land itself goes back to the, the ownership of Chamorro Land Trust, and within that lease it has to revert back. And there are other avenues where laws that are preventing commercial or business people will be applicable to them because they're in business. And also, they have the court system also for that. You know, the value of that property, whether you have built something and you depreciate it or gone down to embarrass me, is always of a value.
Thank you, Mr. Matanani.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Senators, I do have Chairman Tom Ada and then Senator Barnes, so if anyone else would like to participate in the general discussion of this proposal, please let me signify by raising your hand. Senator Ada?
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and yield to anybody else who, who would like to make comments first.
Okay, Senator Barnes?
Cite us, Massey, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Chairman Ada for giving, yielding to me at this time. Maybe, Mr. Chair, for the listening audience, and just based on the, some of the background information that I've seen this, it was in January 8th of 1975 when Senator Paul Bernaldo authored the Chamorro Land Trust Act, and it was signed then in February 4th, 1975, by then Governor Ricardo J. Bernaldo. And it, this Chamorro Land Trust, it allowed for residential and agricultural leases for persons of Chamorro descent. I also want to note that in that provision, it also allows for commercial leases. And in public law 23-38, it established the rules and regulations for residential and agricultural leases, but did not provide at that time for the commercial leases, and, put it upon the commission to, for the Chamorro Land Trust Commission to draft the proposed rules and regulations for commercial leases, and to make it comply with the adjudication, the AAA process. And I want to note, fast forward to today, that the documents were transmitted to this legislature after the AAA process on June 2nd. I want to say, the bill as introduced did not author any of the information or the presentation that came down to the legislature, but I do know, based on review of the amended version, that changes, various changes were added. I do want to note Sections 3 and Sections 4. Section 3 would be a new Section 75107G of Chapter 7521 GCA, and it would say, notwithstanding any provisions, that the, the chapter against subleasing or assignments of leases, the Chamorro Land Trust Commission may also permit commercial leasing to be subleased or assigned under following provisions, and then it gives a D, an numbering of items, sub-items 1 and 2, and on the commercial sublease. It talks about that the master lease of the commercial lease shall be permitted to sublease rooms or space within their established building structure for complementary commercial use, and this provision does not permit the subleasing of the leased land. It says that said commercial sublease shall be allowed only with the prior written consent of Chamorro Land Trust Commission, which consent shall not unreasonably be withheld. And then Sub-Item 2 talks about the, an assignment of commercial lease, and that would say a commercial lease may be assigned to provide that neither the contractual provisions nor the terms of the original lease do not change, and said assignment of commercial lease shall be allowed only with prior written consent of Chamorro Land Trust Commission, which consent shall not be unreasonably withheld. Section 4, well, I noted that there were no proposed deletions or other amendments, but on Section 4, it proposes to waive the requirement of an economic analysis by Chamorro Land Trust Commission. And I did want to note for, for the record that, based on the messages and communications that we received by the legislature, which is number 33-15-0502, that there, there was a submission and something done by the commission, and, and if it's not in the committee report, you know, just make sure that, that it was added. So based on, on what changes that I can understand it, it brings to mind three different questions, and I, I want to go ahead and present the questions, Mr. Chair, for, and then after that, maybe ask the director or the commission members if, if they can take it piece by piece, or then, or, or in general, so if I may?
Senator, if your questions are in general, as it applies to Chamorro Land Trust, then by all means, if it refers directly back to section, I'm going to request that-
No, right.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's why I didn't ask for any deletions or any amendments.
Please proceed.
For, for, my question number one, for all existing leases or licenses, are there, if there are any conditions presently allowable that would be noncompliant with the new rules, will there be any retroactive sanctions to those leaseholders? And I, and I, and I brought this up earlier to some of the constituents out there because it was brought to our attention. For example, if a present lease or license allows for someone to plant both fruits and vegetables, and the new rules require that only fruits or vegetables can be planted, will there be any consequences for having both? That would be my question number one. Number two is, will the new rules and regulations alter or amend any of the terms-
Senators, just because there may be follow-up questions to your, or answers to your questions, number one, so can we go question by question, please?
Okay.
Mr. Bor or Mr. Matanani?
First of all, she's referring to the-
Please use the microphone.
-the new submitted. She's referring to the amended-
Version.
But this is, has not been enacted yet, ma'am. These are the changes. We cannot hold, hold this, we haven't even gone through it, and you're asking questions on these particular changes?
Actually, actually-
I'm sorry.
No, no, Mr. Matanani, the question is general in nature, so Senator, if I can ask you to please rephrase the question so that-
You want me to take and try it?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Bor.
On the question you had specifically about are, are we going to, yeah, existing commercial leases or licenses, are these new rules going to be, are they going to be grandfathered, basically? And the answer is yes. I mean, that's what was the intent, we're not going after them. Now, however, should the need arise that they would like to have something modified in their lease, then we can add provisions under the new rules and regulations. And the case you're talking about specifically was, was a case that came up to our commissioners at our board meeting last month, or last week, where an individual was asked to explain why his commercial license had a sublicense when there was no permission whatsoever in his existing license to do such a thing. And, and it caused the, it caused the, the business license renewal of his sublicensee to be halted because it wasn't permitted to be, there was no permission for them to be sublicensed. And so in our discussions with the, with the licensee, we explained this, that, you know, we can add you on once these rules and regs are, are adopted and the licensee, the sublicensing and subleasing is permitted, if it's permitted, then we can modify your existing agreement, only modify it, not change it in whole. But, you know, there may be some other modifications that might kick into place as well, and that would be perhaps even the percentage rent that's spoken about in the, in the, in the current substitute version. substitute version. Those kinds of things can be kicked in as well. But, but I wanted to make him whole so that he has the ability to do what he was, what he was needing to do according to his current license agreement.
So then I guess my question number two has been answered, and that would have been, will the new rules and regulations alter or amend any of the terms of the existing license or leases?
Only if they bring it to our attention and want, that they want to make any modifications, like to have the ability to sublease or sublicense.
So what exists today by them does not change?
It doesn't change until the term of that license or lease expires. Then we take it as a new whole, a new entity.
Okay. So then, number three would be, will the existing licenses and leases remain in effect assuming they are otherwise compliant with all their terms and conditions based on what's existing today for those leases?
I believe so, yes.
So the answer is yes.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Barnes. Thank you.
She has followed...
Mr. Chair, can I just make a statement? We're here, and I would like to, just a couple of things that I need to do. I would like to thank my, the director, and I saw it yesterday. And I'd like to thank the director. We won't be in this juncture without him. I mean, they are the ones that are stumping the grounds and doing all these things. And we came in here, and I, this is my take on this. We have submitted to you guys a modification of the rules and regulations which would accommodate the problems that we are having. We are trying to make it a smoother application of the rules and regulations. We're not modifying anything else other than the ones that we need. And all we're asking is that whether you accept this or not, or maybe change it to a better situation, but not all of the rules and regulations are no good. And other changes that you, you can, the legislature can do whatever they want. They can even put out a new, call the public hearing and do your own modification. But what we want is whether you accept our changes so we can smooth out or have it tuned up, the rules and regulations before it comes into effect. And it will hit the ground running. That's all we're here for. For me, that's me, I don't know about the others commissioners. But to me, can you please just entertain our submission of the changes? And I see there's changes in the new rules. Are we going to adopt this right now?
Mr. Matanani, Chairman Matanani, we are going through the process. And that's one of the reasons why we certainly appreciate your involvement and your participation as well as some of the other board members so that you would understand the implications of every single section.
All I'm asking, Mr. Chair, is that please entertain what we submitted. And yea or nay, or let it go to lapse into law, and then, you know, and if you do want, you guys have all the prerogative of changing anything that you want in that person. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Chairman Matanani. Yes, Senator Barnes, your closing comments?
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. And I just want to say to the board of the commission members and to the executive director, thank you. It has been over two decades since this, or two decades now, since this has been approved. And now that we're really pushing through these efforts, I think it's important to just recognize the fact that whatever is existing today and that has been, that has been implemented through the board, through the commission, that there is reassurances for those applicants and/or for those leases that everything will stay intact. Only because it has come to our attention that there have been some concern about changes that will be made if these rules and regulations were to be implemented. And that's why those inquiries were asked. But I do want to thank the executive director for Chamorro Land Trust. We've come this far and we are entertaining it. And thank the commission for their time and their due diligence to bringing this to the floor. So sisus Masi, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Barnes. I'm going to allow Speaker Wapat just a follow-up question. And then we, I have Senator Tom Attah, the chairman, and then Senator Underwood. So if there's any other senators that would like to provide and participate in the general comments, please signify by raising your hand.
Mr. Chair?
Madam Speaker?
Mr. Chair, point of information?
Yes, Senator, I'm sorry, Madam Speaker.
I apologize. But if I may, I mean, and this is, if I may just kind of inquire for the good chairman, Mr. Matanani, to just repeat what he just said in terms of, and I may have mistakenly heard him, but what I come to understand of what he said just a few minutes ago is that he's asking for us to take a look on the rules that was sent down by the commission and not necessarily on any amended version. And I just want to make sure I understood that correctly.
That's correct, here, Senator, that's correct.
Mr. Matanani, so that was basically your perspective as chairman?
Yes.
That we should be taking a look at the original rules that were sent, that was sent down without the amendments? And then it's for us then to figure out from then where we go from here?
That's correct. Thank you very much, Senator Espada. I will allow Chairman Attah to explain the entire process and where we're at in terms of the amended version. But before that, I do have a follow-up question by Speaker Wapat. Vice Speaker Cruz, I'm sorry, a point of information?
Also, a point of information, unless I'm mistaken, I thought I heard Mr. Matanani said he had not read these new, these amended rules.
I have not, no, 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 Senator.
So noted. Thank you very much, Vice Speaker Cruz. Speaker Wapat and then Senator Attah.
My follow-up question from the senator from Chalampavo, I think, Chalampavo, on existing licenses that you, and, Mr. Director, you've responded that those would be grandfathered. And so the question then is that how are you going to grandfather some of those licenses or leases when you didn't have the rules and regulations in place? Unless, of course, now looking at the Section 6.5 on application requirements, where if you listed seven where each applicant is required, are you saying then that this particular section has been a policy of CLTC in which then any applicant who've come in and applied that you were ready to license or to lease, but because the rules and regs were not submitted to the legislature that you're now going to grandfather them, should this pass?
Speaker Wapat, I'm going to ask Mr. Moore to respond to your question, please.
Madam Speaker, the existing licenses and leases that the Chamorro Land Trust has were pretty much issued out well prior to the, this, before my watch even as the commissioner and a chairman of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. So these are things that are coming due on some of their, I mean, they've been underway for quite a while already. And while there may not have been any rules and regulations in place on how they were issued, I cannot explain how they were, they were created. But nevertheless, they're in existence, and we have to, you know, give them the honor to honor those existing licenses and leases. But like I said, if there is a reason for them to want to take advantage of the new rules and regulations, then we should have to look at it as a whole at that time.
So you don't think then that all applicants, applications that have not been approved should not be grandfathered until such time that then these rules are in place and then they follow now the new rules?
No, until such time as their current license or lease expires.
Can the chairman please respond?
When it expires, then you come in to renew, then it will be applicable, the new rule.
Yes, for those that have already been granted. I'm talking about the ones that you have not issued licenses for yet or leases.
Then the new rules will apply.
Which rules are they going to follow? The old rules or the new rules?
The new one, the new one, of course.
See, and that's just the opposite of what the director said. And, you know, and remember, please, okay?
No, no, what the director is saying, what is in place right now cannot be changed, not unless the particular people or whoever, the other commercial businesses will want to change over to the new rules and come in and justify what, why are they going to change it? And if they agree, that's fine. But as far as Chamorro Land Trust arbitrarily just terminate the lease or going into their lease, we're violating leases now if you're saying that. But if they want to be applicable to the new lease, they can always come in and renew the lease.
But you see, but that's the danger that I brought up very early on when I asked the question is that if, for whatever rules you were using then or requirements of any applicant, that when they start off, they get a lease, they start off and failure maybe to comply, I mean, or at least half a business plan in place to ensure that there's not going to be a default or they're not going to abandon the project. And the reason why I say that, because even when I look at just the very first number one of the application requirement, two copies of the last three most recent annual audited financial statement, if, if available, I mean, what's that, is it or is it not? I mean, it just doesn't make sense at, you know, to me, and that's why I was asking that question. How are we going to protect the Chamorro Land Trust?
Madam Speaker, you're talking about previous, previous leases that has, previous leases that have been approved and is ongoing. We will not violate the lease and say, hey, now this one here is applicable because, because it's the new rule. No, we can't do that. And you know that, Madam Speaker, that we cannot break the lease. And not unless they have violated some of the conditions of that lease, then we can probably have them go to the new lease. But in any sense, the leases that were already approved, we cannot just go in and make these new, new lease applicable to them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Matanani. Madam Speaker, colleagues, I hope you understand the indulgence I extended to Speaker Wapat because it looked like she was going to a second session of general comments. But Chairman Attah, and then I do have Senator Underwood, and like I said, Vice Speaker Cruz, and if anyone would like to speak, please signify by raising your hand.
A point of information, Mr. Chair. I was just wondering, I know this is general comment period time, and I'm just wondering if we only have one crack at this comment. In other words, if after everybody has...
The rules of engagement is right after everyone's done. If there are any follow-up singular questions, general questions, then I will allow it. Otherwise, we're going to proceed with section by section. And I'm sure that a good number of the questions can be raised during the discussion of the section to section as well as through the discussion of the attachment. So I hope that you would work with me in terms of, I will provide as much allowance for discussion because we really need to ensure that everyone understands exactly what the implications are of the proposed rules and regulations. So your question with regards to whether in fact I'll allow a second round of questions, I would lean in the direction of a singular question, and then we'll delve into the legislation itself because much of these questions, line of questions may also arrive as we go section by section. So, but if you so desire, raise your hand, Senator Espada, I will entertain it at that time. Chairman Attah?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank the commission members for joining us this morning, and also to the director, land management, who has been working very cooperatively with the committee as we basically take the rule, proposed rules and regulations through various changes. Now, I think the reason why we are here today, I think, you know, fundamentally is because we have this backlog of applicants waiting to be issued leases for residential property and for agriculture. But the reason for that backlog, if we dig down just a little bit deeper, is because the law is very clear that leases will not be issued, leases will only be issued for properties that have been surveyed and registered. And therein lies really the dilemma because the Chamorro Land Trust has not had the revenues to be able to go out and accomplish the required surveys and the registry of the land. And so it seems to me then that by allowing the Chamorro Land Trust to be able to lease properties for commercial activity, to be able to generate revenue, would certainly then provide a pathway to resolving the issues related to the requirement to survey lands and to register it. Now, the, so, so the commission went ahead and formulated a set of rules and regulations, took it to the AAA process, and came down to the legislature. And, and from that time that the legislature received those rules and regs that were initially transmitted from the Chamorro Land Trust Commission through the governor's office, the committee actually took the liberty of making amendments to those rules and regs. Amendments, for example, that addresses the issue of how do you determine what is the rent that will be assessed for a piece of, for a property? Now, what came down to the legislature basically proposed that the rent shall be based on, at a minimum, 9% of the appraised value. What the committee did was it amended that proposal and took it one step further and said, well, why don't we charge a fee that is the highest, that should go to the highest bidder, given, you know, presuming that the proposal would be acceptable to the Chamorro Land Trust? So that's the kind of difference that is being made. The, the committee also put in the requirement to answer the question of how are prospective investors going to know what available, what lands are available for commercial leasing? And so the, I believe the original, what was originally transmitted was really silent on that. And so this amended version of the rules and regs put in a provision that basically required that any notices, any, the availability of land, if, if, let's say Chamorro Land Trust wants to focus in on Oka Point to get that leased out, is that it will have to publish a notice of availability of the land. And that notice must come out at least 30 days before the deadline for submittal. It has to be published in its website. So those are the kind of changes that were made. Now, I also want to say that, yes, the committee took the liberty of making changes, Mr. Chairman, Chairman Matanani, to what was transmitted from the Chamorro Land Trust. And, and, and I, I'm just, I'm just somewhat concerned, I guess, that, you know, your statement that you have not read it, although the Chamorro Land Trust Commission, I believe, well, I do know that, that as we were making the changes, as changes were being made, the committee transmitted that to the, to the chairman, I mean, to the director of land management, and pointed out where changes were being made and asked for feedback. During that process, you know, the committee did not receive any feedback to the effect of absolutely not, this is a deal breaker, we've got to change it. So we proceeded along. So then, the fact that you indicated, Mr. Chairman, you know, again, I don't know, you indicated that you have not read the amended version. I don't know whether... you indicated that you have not read the amended version, I, I don't know whether, whether it'd be appropriate to ask, then, then I, then I can assume that it's reasonable then to say that because you have not read it, you cannot take, you cannot say one or one way or the other, whether, whether you think the amended version is, is a workable document or not. So, you know, maybe if I can get a, some kind of response either from you, or for that matter, from the Director based on his analysis of what has been submitted to him, maybe that, that would, that would help me in so far as, you know, knowing where do we go from here?
Senator, as you know, we meet only once a month, and, you know, the, the members here doesn't go down there and daily tend to daily activities, but, and I'm pretty sure the Director himself, you know, will apprise us if there's really a drastic change. But then, even at that, the, you know, the body, the legislature can do, make the changes, and then inform us that this is the particular changes that you're making with the changes that we made. But other than that, I haven't read it. This is the first time I've seen it. This is where I got this, the changes, just this morning when I came. So matter of fact, I don't even have the old, old rules and regulation where the Bidalio stuff, we were looking for one, but just to compare, just to, you know, get an idea what was the changes. But in haste, to make decisions on this, I mean, I was even telling the, the Director over here, how come this one is thicker than ours? Well, that's a back-to-back printing, and this one is only one page. I said, okay, all right.
Thank you, Chairman, Chairman, Chairman Matanani, I believe you already responded to Chairman Ada. Mr. Borja?
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
So if I may ask then, I know that the, the Director has been working closely with advice from legal counsel, and if I may ask, without putting you in an awkward position, Mr. Borja, you know, I'm sure you take, take the advice from the Director closely, and I would ask then the Director, in, in your review of the amended version, the version that has come out from committee, do you think this is a workable document?
Mr. Borja?
As proposed by the committee?
Yes.
Okay. So, so based on that, then, the Director has had, I know that you've had a chance to look at it, and you think it's a workable document?
Yes.
Okay, fine, thank you. Now, so we'll move on to the next question, and that is, it seems that the whole driving force for why we need to pass this, adopt these rules and regulations is we need to generate revenue to be able to go out there and hire the surveyors to survey the properties, get them registered, and then we can issue the leases. Now, that is certainly, given the fact that we've got 8,000 applications and a backlog, I would have the quest, I would ask the question, that seems like there's an immediate need there. Now, as I looked at the, as I was reviewing the quarterly financial report that, that gets submitted by the department, there was $500,000 in CDs that's in the bank, which I assume that's cold hard cash, sitting there right now, and it's Chamorro Land Trust money. And, and so I'm kind of curious, if it's sitting there, why haven't we been able, why hasn't the department been able to, to tap on that so that we can get the survey work underway while we're working on commercial rules and regs, hopefully we'll replenish that?
Because that 500-plus thousand dollars is already encumbered. It is part of the Chamorro Home Loan Guarantee Fund, and it backs up the loan guarantees that have been issued out over the last 20 years.
Okay, fine, fair enough. Now that I know that, I want to look at other parts. The next question I have is, I think that was a very good question that was asked earlier about the applicability of this rules and regs. And this, I'm happy to report, Chairman Matanani, that I believe the language that's in here right now, I believe is the same language that was sent down, and the language is in Section 6.18, applicability of rules and regulations, and it reads specifically, "All current leases and licenses with provisions that differ from these rules and regs may be renegotiated to conform to these rules and regs in order to achieve a more beneficial business relationship between the CLTC and the licensee or the lessee. But in no event shall the total term of the lease be extended." So a good example of this, as I understand it, is we have a, an existing license or a lease up there in Dedidon, and he's been told, hey, the current license that you have does not allow you to sublease. Well, these rules and regs will now allow him to sublease space within the building that he has on the land that he is leasing. So in that case, it certainly makes perfect business sense that, hey, that lessee is going to come in and say, CLTC, I want to sit down and renegotiate my existing lease to allow me to sublease. And so that seems to, you know, but it says, the operative word is, it may be renegotiated in order to achieve a more beneficial business relationship. So I, I hope that puts that particular concern to rest.
So we're saying that we are going to approve this now? Amen. I'm not being, I'm being candid about it.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Chairman Matanani-
I think in this case, Mr. Matanani, as we get to that section, then you can express any concerns that you may have as it applies to the proposal.
So Chairman Matanani, the way it works here then, is everybody's just kind of getting off in general the things that they have on their chest, and then to kind of, you know, set the, the mood and the foundation. And then from there, we'll go in section by section, and if anybody feels that the applicability of the rules and regulations, that we should not allow renegotiation, then, you know, if the majority feels that way, then, then we'll strike that.
I apologize, Mr. Chair.
No problem, no problem, I understand.
Mr. Chair, just point of, point of information and point of order.
Senator Espada, state your point of information.
We have the Chairman of the, of the Commission here, who has specifically said that he would rather, right, have this body vote on the original set of rules that came down, whether we approve it or disapprove it, that's his preference. And yet we somehow insist that we're going to go down this road using this new set of rules and regulation, which the Chairman himself has not even taken a look at, nor has he had the chance to even try to understand of how it fits in going forward. It seems to be unfair that we're really trying to push this process through just for the sake of perhaps meeting a September 1st timeline, when the Chairman himself hasn't even read the rule, the new rules.
Senator Espada, your point is well taken, and as a matter of fact, as the sitting Chair, I was going to recess shortly after the Chairman Ada is done with his comments, so that we can allow at least a two-hour interim, allow the board members to be able to review it. It would also give Chairman Ada the opportunity to review or revisit the course of action. Right now, we are sitting here on a proposal, if, if it's a wish of the body that a different course of action be taken, then certainly we can discuss that as we go through even Section 1. So Vice Speaker Cruz, you have a point of information?
Yeah, I have my own.
And I also wanted to, to see if we can maximize the general comment section, so just for the, for information of the body, I'm sorry, I apologize, I said after Chairman Ada, but I'd like to conclude the general comment and questioning, and then we will recess and allow the board members, hopefully a couple hours, to be able to review the document, and then come back, at least they'll be a little bit more knowledgeable about the provisions contained therein, and then we'll proceed with the discussion. What direction the Chairman Ada and the rest of the body would like to take is, is up to the body and the committee and the whole. Chairman Ada, you still have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Now, there's, concerns have been raised as to how these set of rules, the amended version, the committee's version, will affect existing leases. And I, I think we need to clear the air that there's not these dozens and hundreds of leases that are existing out there, because on July 4th, the committee asked the, the Department of Land Management for information regarding existing commercial leases and licenses for Chamorro Land Trust properties. And the information we got back that there are 14 existing leases and licenses, and most of these are for like, for example, for Adekau Elementary School. That was authorized by a specific law, public law 28-68. The law specifically allows leases for up to 21 years for utilities. So we've got leases out for telecommunications cell sites, for GTA land leases, and, and so there's governing directives that authorize that. The only ones that really seem to be in question, there's probably one, two, three, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven leases, well, seven out of 14. That kind of, kind of leaves you scratching your head as to what was the legal basis for issuing those, those leases. So if there was no legal basis for it, well, that, that's, I guess that's for a separate discussion, as to how do we handle that. But otherwise, based on the information that the committee received, there's really no, there's really no, you know, existing leases out there that, that may be affected by this. Finally, the last thing, and I, I want to be sensitive to how I pose this question, because the commission members represent the, the community at large with respect to Chamorro Land Trust properties. And I have to ask this, Chairman Matanani, is your tenure, when did your tenure expire?
I believe I was notified that, yes, my tenure is up, and, but according to, if I, yes, I think-
So the way the law reads is that you have a definite expiration date for your appointment, and then the law allows you, that member to stay in place for, I believe, 90 days plus three legislative days, and that comes up to about six months. Do you, has your tenure expired six months since?
I don't believe so, no.
No?
No.
Okay, so, so you're, you're still good?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Correct.
I'm still good.
Okay, so, so the Chairman's tenure is, is still, is still in place?
Not unless.
I'm sorry, so-
Just, just for your information, Chairman Ada, April 10, 2015 is the information provided by Mr. Borja that his tenure had expired. So if you're looking at the 90 days plus.
Okay, so we're looking at October, possibly for three legislative days, although remember that just in this month alone, we've probably exhausted about two or three legislative days. Okay, so I just raised that as, as a point.
Mr. Chair?
And then finally, I just want to kind of get a better understanding of the Chairman Matanani's perspective, or, or, or your statement, that you want us to look at the rules and regulations that was originally transmitted by the, by the commission, and let's talk about that. So in essence, if we take that apart, then what we're talking about is put aside the amended version, and let's go back to square one, and we'll make the same amendments possibly, which would bring us right back to where we are today. Is that kind of how you're envisioning that, Chairman Matanani?
My perspective is, Mr. Chair, is we have submitted this particular document to, to, we have submitted this particular document for, for changes on the rules and regs to modify and make it, you know, more solid, the rules and-
All right, let me just point out one thing, Mr. Matanani. The, what was transmitted was not to make changes to the rules and regs, because there are no existing commercial rules and regs. That's why it's being submitted, because we don't have one in place.
Not even the-
The only thing we have in place is the rules and regs which governs the leasing of residential and agricultural lands. That was the Paul Bernalio Land Trust Rules and regs, public law 23-something.
I believe there is a provision there for the commercial leases.
No, 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 no.
Not unless I'm mistaken about it, but it's been quite a while since I read that, but referring to, I might be wrong, sure.
Yeah, it, it's very clear in public law, and, and there's two parts of the law which says that there will be no commercial leases until commercial rules and regs are in place. And, and we don't have any commercial rules and regs in place. So what was transmitted down was not to change, we can't change anything that doesn't exist. So I just want to make that clear. And, and please, somebody correct me if my understanding is wrong. So I just want to make it clear. We are, we are entertaining then the set of rules and regs to get one in place. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chairman Ada. I have Senator Underwood, Vice Speaker Cruz, and if anyone else would like to speak, Senator Nicholas. Senator Underwood, you're up.
I, I believe you had proposed that we would recess until-
What I'd like to do is conclude the general comment section, and then we will recess and allow the board members to be able to review it, hopefully with a, a couple hours.
Well, okay, I'm just making this general comment, given the fact that, I know that you haven't quite reviewed what was, what we're, what we have before us. But under Section 6.4, under eligibility, and given the review of the original bill, I mean, original public law, public law 12-226, the intent there initially for the Chamorro Land Trust was actually to preserve available lands for the Chamorro people. Under this eligibility, part of the eligibility, it would expand to those who are residents of Guam, and that there would be a preference, how is that described, eligible preference will be granted to an entity whose owner or, or company officer is native Chamorro as defined in 21 GCA Chapter 75. And my, my statement about that really is that it seems to broaden the eligibility thereby watering down the primary intent of the Chamorro Land Trust.
Senator Underwood, did you want anyone in the panel to respond?
It's, it's up to them if they want to respond to that, but that, that's my general comment and my concern about this section.
Thank you very much, Senator Underwood. Vice Speaker Cruz, you have the vote.
Thank you very much. I wasn't going to comment today. Yesterday, I had asked that we bring the commission members in, because this is not an ordinary commission. The commissioners for the Chamorro Land Trust are such, are as a group, the commission, the most powerful commission ever established by the Guam Legislature. And for 20 years- And for 20 years, governors have avoided appointing all the members to the commission in the hopes so that they wouldn't have to face the strength of this commission. there is a specific section in the original enabling legislation that says, "The powers and duties of the governor and the department," which is Mr. Bora, "with respect to lands of the territory shall not extend to lands having the status of Chamorro homelands." It was very clear that the power no longer vested in him, or his appointing authority, the governor, and I would think even this legislature over those lands. All the power vested in those three individuals. And when I made my ruling 20 years ago, it was a very unpopular ruling, because the governors knew that they were going to lose their powers. And many of you were members of the legislature at the time when they had to designate lands that were no longer going to be reserved, and were given to the Chamorro Land Trust. And the fights that we had on this floor, trying to take property out of the Chamorro Land Trust, and trying to give it to somebody else. That's how powerful this group is supposed to be. And to hear today that there had been communications with the department, but not with the commission on amendments that were being made, and then to make a decision that we're going to recess for two hours to allow them to read is unreasonable. I have tried to remind everybody, and I made that clear when we had the public hearing, when the original rules were saying that the signature of the director was going to be sufficient, and I reminded everybody that he has no power. Not that I'm disrespecting him, but I'm just acknowledging what the law says, that the power is with the commission. They're more powerful than the governor in controlling these lands. Neither the governor nor the department shall have any, shall extend to the lands having designation as Chamorro homelands. So I believe we have to accord these commission members the respect and the power due them by not telling them that they have to come back in two hours and sit through our discussion. They've got to be able to be the one that, under the law says, "The commission shall adopt rules and regulations." So let's please accord this commission the power and that they were accorded, that they were provided under this statute, unless we're going to repeal this.
Thank you very much, Vice Speaker Cruz. Do you have a motion to present to the body? If not, we will continue our comments on the general portion, and then revisit any motion either from Vice Speaker Cruz or Chairman Ada or anyone on the floor. Senator Nicholas, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to first begin by thanking the chairman of the committee, Senator Ada, as well as the director, Mr. Bora, and the commission members. This has been a very eye-opening experience for me, having dove in headfirst into this whole issue. And I kind of wanted to encapsulate what it is exactly we're doing here, and why we're trying to consider these commercial leases with respect to the overall intent of why the Chamorro Land Trust was created to begin with. We are about 20 years into a process that has people, 4,000 people still on a waiting list for residential property. And those people signed up for these properties under the Chamorro Land Trust of the understanding that they were going to be able to get a piece of property from the Chamorro Land Trust as the law was intended. For me, looking at it with that context in mind, what I see is a very noble intention with a process that had a bottleneck that has choked off the very people we're supposed to be trying to help to begin with. And that noble intention is to be able to afford those properties to the Chamorro people. And the bottleneck that is constricting us at this point is money, and the lack of money necessary for us to survey these properties and get them into the hands of the very people that this law was intending to benefit. Am I incorrect at all in any of those assumptions or determinations so far, or is that accurate? Mr. Chairman?
You're correct.
Okay. And so here we are now, entertaining rules and regulations that were transmitted by the commission, that have been amended by the committee that has oversight over the commission, with the intention of us trying to figure out how to allow certain properties within the trust to be leased out commercially, so we can get the money to survey those properties to get them into the hands of the people that the law was originally intended to benefit. Am I correct so far?
That's true, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So at this juncture, we're talking about details of, you know, should we honor what you submitted, should we begin working with what the committee has reviewed and amended? For me, I rewind back to the fundamental question of, do we or do we not authorize commercial leases of Chamorro Land Trust property in order to survey those properties to get them into the hands of the residents? And I think everybody on this floor, whether senator or commission member, can agree that yes, that is what we want to do. Am I incorrect at all, Mr. Chairman?
You're correct.
Okay. And so what I would like for us to do is to kind of center the conversation around us considering how we can go about making that happen, so that we can get these 8,000 people their properties, right? So when it comes to getting these commercial leases considered, for me, what I try to wrestle with is the original intent of the law, which is to make these properties available for residents. But the reality of the law, that the inability for us to monetize the system, is preventing those properties from actually getting to the residents. And so now, I weigh the question of, okay, how do we monetize? And the answer that we've all agreed on so far is, create a portion of those properties and allow them to be commercially leased. So for me, what I'm considering is, and I really would appreciate any kind of feedback I can get on this, we don't want all of the properties to be available for commercial lease. I think all of us can agree to that. Am I correct, Mr. Chairman?
That's right. We are not going to be just leasing out for commercial purposes. The main thing is the agricultural and the residential.
Okay. And so the concern, I think, that is shared by the committee, that is shared at least by myself, from what was originally submitted by the commission, is that there's no limitation in the rules and regs that you submitted on how many properties can be available for commercial use. Now, Mr. Chairman, and senora and senor who are members of the commission, you may say, yes, we're going to limit it. But commission members change, you know, politics changes. And my concern is that while everybody in this room may agree that that's going to be the primary purpose, if we don't put it in the law, then the risk is there that we've left the door open for it to not be used the way we all want it to be used today. So I would like for us to consider, including language, preferably, I would think in the bill, in the actual law, not just the rules and regs, but an overriding limitation on how many properties we can make available for commercial, maybe only 10%. And the remaining 90% has to only be for residential. And then the commission can figure out how they want to go about leasing that 10%, they can identify the 10% they want to lease, to get the most money, and we can also write it into the law that you get the most money, and all that money is for surveys and for infrastructure for the residents. That way now, no matter who's on the commission or who's in the legislature, these 10% of properties that are leased, the money is only going to be used for that purpose. Everybody knows that what we've done here today is within the spirit of what was originally intended when the law was passed so many years ago. Does anybody have any thoughts on that, creating some kind of limitation? Because right now, from what was submitted by the commission, there is no limitation on which properties, and I think we need to carve that out and make that very, very clear. And I think we need to come to terms on that as a group. Mr. Chairman, how does that sound to you?
Sounds pretty good, yes.
It sounds like something we can work with?
If any other way, then I guess that, you know, limiting that particular piece of property for, but then, then it's up to the commission to determine where and whereabouts.
Yes, yes. I mean, you know, there may be some who want the legislature to be involved in deciding that, but for me, based on what I'm listening to from the vice speaker, with all the powers vested in you, I think that we would be very well served with a compromise where this body agrees on a certain percentage that's authorized, but the commission can decide which one. So you can pick and choose, but only 10% of the total available. And the reason why I'm actually okay with that is because the commission's true intent is to monetize as much as possible within that 10%. You're going to find the one that can get the most money. And then that way, by getting the most money, you're able to survey the most properties and put in the most infrastructure. And I don't think that the legislature should be necessarily in the business of figuring out which properties are the most valuable for that purpose. That's, I think, your job, and it's not an easy one. The other question I had, and the reason I'm asking these questions is because I am preparing an amendment for us later on, but this dialogue is very important for me to understand what the commission may be okay with in me putting into this amendment. So we're okay with creating a 10% limitation so far. My other concern was, you know, the commission, I think, should definitely reserve the power in determining which properties, but I don't think the commission has the expertise to administer the property. You know, to go out and find the best buyer, or to go out and every day go and collect the rent from the lessee. What does the commission think about authorizing the Guam Economic Development Authority to be the ones to go out and find the people who are going to lease the property and to manage that lease with you being their client? So you're their boss, and you tell them what to do, and they collect a small fee, like a property management fee, but all the rest of the money goes back into the CLTC? How does that, how does that sound to you, Mr. Chairman?
We have already have an MOU with GIDA, so, and all those properties for commercial use, they have it. Matter of fact, back 2016, came in to utilize the EPO point, and we told them to go to GIDA, because we have an MOU within GIDA. For us, if you can utilize it, fine, and, you know, we're not going to charge you guys because it's public use. But yes, we do have a MOU with GIDA.
And that relationship has been to your satisfaction on the commission's?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Okay. So I thank you very much for the dialogue, because, you know, from the investment world, I was a history major, and I worked in finance in my profession, and I would rather get 90% of something than 100% of nothing. And right now, what I'm seeing is 20 years, people waiting since 1995 with nothing. And we need to find a way to get them to something that they've been promised when this law was passed. And I applaud the commission, I applaud the director, and I applaud the committee chair for moving this issue forward and trying to figure out, how can we fulfill the spirit of the law? The 90% spirit of the law, which is getting those properties into the hands of the residents and monetizing the 10% now, which is what we're talking about, for the benefit of all of those 8,000 people. Because for me, what will be such a wonderful thing to see is for us to actually take an action that would resolve a 20-year-old problem, that's not just, you know, a changing of the law, but actually putting lands under the feet of the very people that we're supposed to be putting it to. You know, that's what we're supposed to do. So I would just like, Mr. Chairman, to kind of bring the conversation back full circle to that. I know that we can probably lock horns, because there are, I can already see that there's a basis to lock horns on whose version was submitted, which version we're entertaining. But if we lock those horns, I'm really concerned that it's going to result in us going back into what's been the issue over the last 20 years. And I really would like for us instead to understand that we fully respect the commission's authority, understanding that the way the process does work is the legislature does approve the rules and regs. Now, how do we reconcile those two very clear authorities for the final and ultimate purpose of us making these lands available with what I've, at least what I've talked about so far of saying, okay, only 10%, the CLTC shall decide, GIDA shall administer, and all of the money shall be used for surveys and infrastructure? Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I guess I would kind of just like to kind of put that out there as a framework for the discussion going forward, because I would like to see us come to some kind of an outcome. I'm concerned that in the interest of an outcome, you know, the politics can get in the way, and then, you know, it just becomes, you know, my way or the highway, and I really don't think that that's in any way going to benefit any of those 8,000 people, or the spirit of the law to which we are trying to avail of here, or the good intentions of everybody who's brought us to this point. So I'm very grateful for what I've been able to learn so far, I'm very grateful to be a part of this process, and I will be especially grateful if we can all come to terms with a resolution that's going to actually open up this bottleneck, get the money in that we need from these 10% properties that we're leasing, and get those properties into the hands of the people, because that's what we're supposed to be doing. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you very much, Senator Nicholas. Colleagues, there's no objection. We will recess until 2:00 PM, noting that there were a couple of concerns that were raised by members of the body. One, in direct reference to the version that is being entertained and allowing the commission members to be able to absorb the information and the amended, the proposed amended version. And then the other concern was raised as to whether, in fact, by Vice Speaker Cruz, whether, in fact, two hours is ample time for the commission to review that. So the chair will entertain any motion when we return, otherwise, we will continue with general comments from the floor, and then we'll proceed by section, section by section. So we recess, the committee recesses until 2:00 PM.